All to order of the Carney School District Board of Education, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Student, open and united States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mary Cole?
Here.
Brian here.
Here.
Dan Holloway?
Here.
John Curran?
Here.
Reese Whitehouse?
Here.
Susan Murphy?
Here.
Darlene Bailey?
Here.
Okay. Next item, we need to, a ratification of a vote to excuse board member absences.
Move to ratify to excuse board meeting. Board meeting absences from November 20, November 2022, December 2022, and January 2023. Regular board meeting for Dan Holloway as presented.
Second.
All right. Just to introduce this, this topic, there is a policy that if a single board member misses three regular meetings, if they are unexcused, then that board member is considered to have vacated their position. Mr. Holloway has missed three regular meetings, which there are other meetings in between that he has attended, but the, the rule is three regular meetings, so he has asked for relief from that and, and to be excused. We did a voice vote of the board prior to this meeting, and so now we are simply having an official vote to ratify that decision. So, any comments, questions? Okay.
I think it just to note that being on the board takes a lot, I mean, I think we all know that, and life still happens, right? Good, bad, indifferent, it still happens. In the last few years, it's happened a lot. So, I thank you for your letter to us, and I think it's important to be engaged in going forward, so.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mary Cole?
Here.
Yes. Brian here.
Yes.
Dan Holloway? You're gonna have to say it.
I was gonna say, that's why.
John Curran?
No.
Reese Whitehouse?
Yes.
Susan Mormon?
Yes.
Darlene Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, adopt them in the agenda.
Move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Faced.
Thank you.
Okay, can you give me just a second?
I can. Technology.
Okay, ready to roll.
Okay, we have no public comment tonight. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. Any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, all in favor? Faced. Thank you. Sorry, I'm talking to my computer. That's what?
I said, that's just user error now, because it was my computer.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Information items.
Moving on to information items. Financials? Ginger?
You're referring to the fund balance report on the screen. Current operating revenues remain at 45 million, expenses are at 46 million. The operating revenues received as of January 31st were 32.8 million, which represents 72% of our forecast. The district has received 96% of our property tax revenue. Operating expenses of 21.6 million have been incurred, and that represents 46 of our forecast. All in all, we're still staying at our 20.45% operating fund balance. Did anyone have any questions?
I just had a, this is kind of a random question, as I was reading through this and thinking about inflation and the price. Do we across the district have a price of eggs item that, oh my gosh, we've had to adjust because something is costing more for us? Because I know we're looking at increased prices, but it sounds like we're still doing a great job of managing. Are there issues like that that we're having to deal with?
Right now, our buildings are being very conservative. The big purchases, purchases will take place at the end of March, and then we'll kind of see where we're gonna fall, but I feel like we've done a pretty good job.
That's great, that's great. I mean, that's the assumption, because the numbers look good, but you just wonder, because we are in a time when there's some uncertainty about pricing of different things, so.
Ginger, you did share that you, you're forecasting technology costs to go up tremendously for next year.
For next year, yeah.
Gas, things like that.
Technology, just soft, recurring technology costs, probably another couple hundred thousand. So, we're still gathering data for next year's budget. A lot of detail involved there, so. See how that rolls.
Great. Any other questions? Right. Let's see, it went back up again. Okay, program evaluation, safety, emergency response, and intervention.
Good evening. For those of you that I may not have met, Eric Nolan, Director of Operations for the school district, presenting our safety and security program evaluation for the school district. I ain't that supposed to work. So, our, our goal is obviously to provide a safe and secure environment for our students and staff and visitors. The, that goal comes straight out of our school board strategic goals for this year of student learning environments will be equitable and safe for high-quality instruction. We can divide our department into five areas, operations, capital investment, system, systems, partnerships, and, and relationships. Operations-wise, this, this falls under, under the umbrella that is operations, and that's me. But the person on the ground, boots on the ground, is our SRO, Adam Kirkland. Adam has been with the district, our SRO, for nine years, and altogether, he's been a police officer of some sort for 22. Things that Adam does, obviously, he is our law enforcement presence for the district, throughout the district, and he's out there building relationships with the kids and staff, doing building checks. He does our trainings for safety and security procedures. He is our liaison between the school district and emergency personnel. He, he, he does the coordination and provides security at our events, and he, he participates and helps lead our different committees that are involved with, with, with safety and security. In addition, he, he speaks to classrooms when asked about law enforcement issues, and he heads up our summer police academy, which is for our middle school kids. Some of the trainings that Adam takes, does, and also gives is our ALICE procedures, which is our armed intruder procedures. He goes to training on that when needed, then he comes back, and then he trains our staff and leads those, leads those drills. He, he, he stays current with his post-certification obligations, which, he might need to correct me on this, but it's peace officer service training?
Standard.
Standardized, standardized training, and he attends all those things, such as school safety academies and SRO trainings throughout the year. Just to give a little background on our department compared to our surrounding districts, this chart, the middle column, has got SRO slash SSO, that S, School Resource Officer or School Security Officer. That column is armed officers in the district, and the one next to it on the right is safety staff, and that would be people involved in safety and security but are not armed. So, you can, you can go down through there and see how we compare to the surrounding four districts.
That's incredible.
Things that we've, we've purchased to help with our security over the last several years, we have updated our security entries, camera upgrades and expansions throughout each school, designated radio system with channels in, for each school and standalone for our district, AEDs and replacement parts for those, and Narcan for, for drug opioid overdoses, and, and a vehicle for our SRO to use. Systems that play into this, we implemented a hall pass system, which is an ID scanning system for adults entering our school buildings that are not teachers or students. E-hall pass is unique to Carney Junior High, and it is used to track student movement, kind of electronic version of writing hall passes. P3 Tips hotline is a hotline that goes to crime stoppers, and line-wise is a system that scans our Chromebooks and our electronic usage with keywords that are flagged and then passed along to administration if it, if it becomes something that needs to be dealt with. Online bullying form, reporting forms make it easier to report things that are going on. Open door alerts, exterior doors that have key card access. If they are propped open for a certain amount of time, then alarm alerts go to the administrators of that building to, to search and see why that has happened. And we have a MOX, Missouri Automated Criminal History System, history system, which is for background checks for our employees or people that are in our building. So, we have, we have partnerships with a lot of different agencies, and, you know, first and foremost, we, we partner with our local PD, Clay County sheriffs, and our fire department. One of the ones that gets overlooked, in my opinion, but is very important, and it, it's just another department in our school system, and that's our social, emotional resources that we have. It falls under student services, but is a benefit for safety and security in that the work that our therapists and counselors and social workers do to head off problems before they become security issues possibly. And last but not least, everybody in our district works for positive relationships for our students specifically. That can start with our SRO or our teachers, administration, and so on, but the more positive relationships our kids have, they feel comfortable talking to them, and obviously, you can see where that's a benefit for, for us to alleviate bigger issues down the road and, and deal with issues before that happens. So, trying to put some data together. Collectively, we want to, we want to take every precaution we can to prevent major incidents from happening, whether that's kids not learning or somebody's harmed in our district. But major incidents is kind of a relative term that's hard to put, you know, sheer data to. And so, what we've done is we've logged some discipline that would lead to kids not learning possibly and/or being harmed, and we can track that going forward. So, we put on this chart alcohol offenses, drug offenses, vaping, assault with injury weapons, and on the right-hand column is reports, or issues that went to KPD that actually were, that they wrote up a report for and end up as them dealing with. And so, obviously, we would want to have as few of these as possible, and as we move forward, we'll take a look at the things we're doing and see if it has an effect on, on these, these numbers.
Is this slide district-wide? This is, I mean?
District-wide, yes. This chart is the three-year budget expenditures for school safety and security. If you wanted to, some generalities of breaking this number down, approximately 70% goes to salary of both our SRO and extra security that is hired throughout the year, and the other 30% is generally cameras and door electronics and the installation fees that go with that. What's in our future? This year, we've asked for input and feedback from our strategic planning committee, parent safety committees, as well as our building administrative teams, and we've done some assessment of our local neighbors, neighboring school districts, and our short-term goals. This would look familiar for anybody that was involved with the strategic planning committee, that we'll have an audit done of, a safety audit done of our facilities by an outside agency, and from that, we'll develop a, a plan, a scorecard that we'll use in the future to evaluate our progress, and, and that will then determine what actions we take each year. Minor things are, or short-term things that we think we can take care of fairly quickly. There are, there's a few minor upgrades to the secure entrances, a few of them around the district, mainly dealing with doors, additional cameras in some areas of certain schools, and there's a couple areas at some schools that need some interior locks that changed out. Long-range goals, like to increase the number of district SROs, and specifically, so they can provide a more thorough and consistent presence across the district, as well as the possibility of expanding programs and interaction with kids. The bullet points below are some of the, the possible programs and interactions that we see if we were to add additional staff. So, I'm gonna finish up with just four, four basic general principles that whether you're an SRO, a student, or a staff member or parent, would help if we have these in mind. If, see something, say something to somebody. Be concerned but not consumed with it, and there's no one fix to the security problems around, and security is everybody's responsibility. And I think those, those general four statements apply and, and would help us going forward if we can keep those in mind. So, with that, I'll close up and ask if there's any questions for Mr. Kirkland and/or myself.
I have a question. I have a question for you. So, there's one SRO in the, in our school system, and I saw like Smithville, and all, they had three or four. Are they partnering with Clay County? Are they partnering with their local city PD? How are they implementing additional resources for their buildings?
It's, it's done a couple different ways, Adam.
So, like at Liberty, they have one SRO, but they also have hired like 12 school safety officers or security officers, whatever you wanna call them, that are armed, and then they also have additional, I believe they call them hall monitors, that are not armed. Platte County, they have, I believe, three SROs that they have, just like me, with our school district, that they have hired, and then they have three additional that are unarmed, security officers at whatever they do. Excelsior Springs, they partner with the police department, but they have one guy that is their director of security that's armed. And Smithville is partnered with, as of right now, they're partnered with the police department, but I've been told through North Kansas City, because they're getting their new superintendent, it sounds like that might change a little bit for them, and they're, they're looking to add additional officers as well.
John, were you asking about the funding, if they were splitting that, or?
I mean, you can answer that, too. I mean, I don't have a problem with that, but it was more of like, what's their dynamic? Like, I mean, you answered it perfect, Adam. I mean, you're kind of, it's mostly city is what I'm hearing most, mostly, not a lot of county resource as far as.
Well, North Kansas City, they partner with the Clay County Sheriff's Office, and that's, they have 12 SRDs.
Okay.
That go throughout the North Kansas City School District, other than North Kansas City High School, because North Town takes care of that, and I think Gladstone takes care of Antioch Middle and a couple of their other stuff.
Okay.
But Smithville, their, their funding is coming from partnering with the city? Is that correct?
I believe that they do a split, but I'm not sure what the split is.
Okay, and maybe Excelsior as well.
I know like North Kansas City with, with the sheriff's office, it's a 90-10 split.
Okay.
The school district's paying 90% of their salary and their benefits.
Okay.
Sheriff's part is paying the 10%.
And when you say like unarmed, but they are still being, they're still paid through the district, correct? I mean, like, security officers?
Right.
Okay.
If they're unarmed, they're still paid.
Have, have we as a district ever looked into, or have we ever had like a watchdog program?
I know we used to have a watchdog program in the elementaries.
Okay.
I know Southia used to run a pretty good one.
Okay.
For sure, just because I know when my daughter was there.
Right.
Pretty, in Liberty, I believe they call that position a liaison, and the focus, and the, the whole focus of that person's job is to even, because they're unarmed, but they get, they build relationships with the kids, and then they report to the SRO.
Yeah, and they only have the one, but I think every building has a couple armed security officers.
Yeah.
Hawthorne had the watchdog dad, too.
Tell me this, if there, if you're at this, I'm just gonna ask this question. You're at Dogwood, there's an incident at the junior high. How long does it take you to get from Dogwood to the junior high with the city currently as it sits?
With just driving normal?
Just driving there as quickly as you can get.
Probably five to 10 minutes.
Five to 10 minutes. That's pretty eye-opening. Okay.
I will add that this is one of the areas that we will include in our community survey.
Right.
We know that that measured pretty high in our strategic planning. You know, the school district has, we're relatively low with this discipline, and we've invested our resources in the classroom wisely, and that's evident in how our kids are performing. But with what's happening in society, I think it's, now's a good time for us to evaluate in right size what is safety and security look like for our district, so.
Do we have information, I know you said it's kind of subjective of looking at the types of incidents, but that chart that you had, do we have something similar from some of those other districts to compare? Here's the number of incidents, and here's how many SROs they have.
Currently, we do not, but we, we can work on getting that.
I can call Liberty and get it probably from Gary Majors pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah, the information that Eric tried to pull from Desi really just looks at ISS and OSS data, and it really, you know, we didn't break it down quite to that level.
Some of the stuff that they, you know, did give discipline for doesn't always fall into the realm of maybe a criminal offense, or maybe I can't tie it to somebody or something like that.
I will say, being a one-man show, you do a very good job. My pre-K knows who you are, and my first-grade student knows who you are as well, Officer Kirkland, and so you are seen in the buildings, and I appreciate that, so.
Yeah, I agree with that, but you do a great job.
Yep.
Okay, our next information item, we have a career and technical education program evaluation, which is a written report. We will not have a report, does anyone have any questions about that? All right. Next. Ben, you're on with the construction update.
Good evening, everybody. So, got good news tonight. So, here, later, we're gonna ask for a vote for approval of amendment number three to our contract, which includes four new projects. So, we've talked about them a little bit in the past. You got the middle school restroom renovation, the early education center renovation, the high school theater, and then we added one to it, the junior high foundation repair. So, there's a foundation that's settled a little bit, caused some cracking in the walls, so we've actually included that pricing in here, too. So, we took bids in the month of January, so the 25th, and got really good bid coverage, over 50 bids for the small amount of scopes we had on these projects, and we allowed folks to bid one school or bid all the schools just to try to get more interest in the job, and it turned out well. So, the good news is, you know, in times like these with inflation going up, construction prices going up, these projects came in under the budget, so that's awesome news for these. We didn't have to cut anything out, so no VE items or anything like that. So, we're in per the original design intent, which is good.
And no change orders, right, Ben?
That's right. We didn't bring any last time, right?
You didn't.
I'm just, hey, just gotta keep that on and, you know, make sure you know it. So, if approved later tonight, most of the construction's gonna start over the summer. I know there's been some discussion about theater equipment, the, you know, AV systems and lighting. Can we get it right now? We've got commitments from folks that we can get all that stuff this summer, okay? So, that's really good news there. We had to swap a couple things out with the design team, but we got good quality equipment, just kind of a different brand to make that happen. And then we may try to, if weather works and if timing can work, there's a possibility we might try to attack the footing at the junior high over spring break. It'd be nice to get it out of the way, but if not, we'll do it over the summer. And then the roof package that you approved back in December, that will probably start the month of May, kind of TBD based on weather. So, that's kind of the update right now, just gonna ask for approval later tonight, and then the construction will happen, you know, going forward. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Next, demographic study?
So, this is, I asked to put this on the agenda just to keep the conversation regarding elementary number five, an active discussion. So, we have contracted with Rick Brammer from Applied Economics. He actually is. He actually is based out of Arizona. He does a lot of work in the Kansas City area, so he will be in district early March, really start to drive the area, meet with the city, really start to dig into potential development. He's been working with Ryan to pull in, and Tammy regarding historical data within the district. We're hopeful that we will have preliminary data back to us probably end of April, beginning of May. He's aware that this is a time issue for us, time-sensitive, so he'll work quickly, but wanted to make sure that this remains an active discussion, that we're continuing to work on this.
Thank you. All right, moving on to action items. Adoption of board policy, one second reading.
Board policy, I-140-P and F-190-P on the first reading as presented.
Second. Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Item D, Amendment Number Three for bond projects.
Move to approve Amendment Number Three, GMP for bond projects as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. All right. Item C, approval of agreement for turf replacement. Mr. Nolan?
Don't need a motion at first.
Question first, yes, please.
Move to approve the agreement with ATG Sports Industry Incorporated for the turf replacement as presented.
Second.
Sure, and I'm delighted to talk about this with you. It's a big, big expense for the school district, but I want to start out by saying it's a planned expenditure, and you have to do that from the day that you install field turf. You know that there's only going to be a certain life for the turf, and I just want to give a little background to you on that. Basically, the turf starts to deteriorate, and the main reason that that happens is exposure to UV, along with weathering, along with usage. And so, that all kind of contributes to the pace that that deterioration happens. At the same time, you've got the infill that goes with it and that's underneath it, which becomes compacted over time and hardens. And so, with the measurement on the hardness is measured in, they call it GMAX measurement, and the higher the number, the harder the surface. And so, generally speaking, the government deems anything over 200 as unsafe to play on. Industry standard has been, for most people, accepted as 165, and ATG, who had done our first field, on their infill, they guarantee a level of 145 for the duration of their warranties. And their warranty on the first field was eight years. Their guarantee, their warranty on this particular field is for 10 years with 145 GMAX guarantee for those 10 years.
Hey, Eric, when are they, are they going to come out yearly, every couple years, to check that GMAX rating since it's a warranty?
That hasn't been talked about. It is, it's usually an outside company that does that.
Hmm. So, are we going to...
Yes.
Work that through?
After year two is when they usually start testing for that.
Okay.
Yes. And what we've used in the past is a Kansas City-based independent field turf tester. Just want to say, appreciate your patience with this. We had the opportunity to try to look into doing this in the wintertime when the field is not in use, and that we just, we couldn't get it to work within that tight timeframe because then you had to start looking at, when do spring sports start, and can we make sure that we have it done by then? And I know that you guys have gotten a couple updates and different things, and so appreciate your patience with that. So, is there any questions on this motion?
Eric, I may have missed it, but I don't remember hearing you say, we're on what year of our current field?
This is, at the end of this spring, will be 11 full years.
And this field was guaranteed for...
Eight.
Eight, yeah. Okay.
When do we look to replace it? Like, timeframe?
After, you mean, if we...
If this is approved?
If this is approved and is put in, then you would, you would think that the 10-year would be the time you would start looking at it, and then you would monitor it on, you know, weather, the weathering of the field, the disintegration of the blades, and then the compaction of the infill. So, 10 to 13, somewhere in there?
Do we have any other questions? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Board member comments? On behalf of the board, thanks to the KEA for providing our gifts this evening. We appreciate that. I'm not sure if anyone's here that brought them, but thank you. They probably went to the parade.
I would like to, Officer Kirkland, I know how hard he works, and I know that when I was in a strategic planning meeting, how, with Eric, I was in his group talking about safety and security and the importance from the community and the staff in safety and security, and I know how serious Adam takes that, and I appreciate that, and I know that we're, that's always, I mean, that's going to be our focus, right? It's always going to be something that's at the top, so I appreciate you guys' seriousness in protecting our kids. It's a very big deal.
I would reiterate what John said. I would just reiterate what John says, from all the teachers, all the students, all the voices, people know Kirkland, Officer Kirkland, wherever you go, and some of that's from sporting events. Even kids, some kids, I think, that aren't in school, if they're, you know, from a public family or whatever, like, families know you. So, it's huge, positive things.
I sit on the safety committee, and I've been to, I guess, two meetings. Eric is doing a great job organizing them and conducting them, and Officer Kirkland being involved, and it's pretty eye-opening, to be honest, what, it's eye-opening what our strengths are with the resources that we have. I'm extremely impressed with what they do in the classroom as teachers, as well as what Officer Kirkland can teach the staff. But it's also pretty eye-opening what our concerns are and what our weaknesses are. It, I'm, it'll be interesting going forward what we can do and what they can bring to the table that we can move forward with, so... But thank you for all, because it's a lot of work, hard work, so...
Important dates coming up. No school on Monday for President's Day. March 1st is an early out. March 15th is our next board meeting. March 17th is the end of the quarter. March 20 through 24 is spring break.
Action for closed session to immediately proceed the regular meeting in March, including any record or vote to discuss items and issues allowable under Section 610-021 of the Missouri Sunshine Law.
Second. Roll call, please.
Meredith Cole.
Yes.
Brian Hahn.
Yes.
Dan Hahn.
Yes.
John Carr.
Yes.
Reese White.
Yes.
Susan Morgan. Yes. Carole Bader. Yes. Thank you all for coming. We're adjourned.